Good evening and welcome to tonight's July 10th Planning Commission meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order now, and if everybody could please stand with us and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that this meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KC LV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Chair Quinn?
I'm here, thank you.
Vice Chair Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
And Commissioner Bonnar?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members in the public now who wish to speak under the portion of this agenda? If so, come forward now. I don't see anyone, so we're going to... Do you want to speak on a certain item, sir? Well, do you want to speak on it when it's time for the item, or do you have to leave or something? Okay, then we'll just wait for that item, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to move on now to item number five, which are the minutes from last month's meeting of June 12th, and we're looking for a motion on that meeting.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the meeting of June 12th, 2012.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on now to item number six. Any items from the Planning Commission, staff, and/or of the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward now and acted upon at this time. Let's first move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? If yes, please allow... Oh, and first, we're going to hear from Mr. Staff, Mr. Gepkekey, on this item, sir.
Chairwoman Quinn, item 28, the applicant has requested that this item be obeyed to the August 14th Planning Commission meeting. And then items 17, 18, and 19, the applicants have requested these items be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkekey. Could we please have a motion on those items being pulled?
Madam Chairman, I move that item number 28 be held in abeyance to the August 14th, 2012 meeting. I also move that items 17, 18, and 19 be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. If we could please vote on that now. And that vote passes. And now we'll move on to our consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner, commission member, or applicant so desires. Starting with number seven, it's EOT 45409, applicant Walgreen Company, owner LV2NW LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time of a special use permit, SUP 38340, for a 79-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 15,120-square-foot retail establishment at 6,001 West Chiant Avenue. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow's Ward. Staff is recommending approval. The next one is number eight, EOT 45430. Applicant is the Walgreen Company. Owner is Shadow Mountain Marketplace LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time of a special use permit, SUP 38276, for an 81-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 14,820-square-foot retail establishment located at 6495 North Decatur Boulevard. This also is in Ward... I'm sorry, this is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross's Ward, and again, staff recommends approval. Moving on to number nine is EOT 4531. The applicant owner is the United States of America et al., for possible action on a request for an extension of time of an approved variance, variance 38103, which allowed a 10-foot screen wall and a 16-foot retaining wall, where an 8-foot screen wall and 4-foot retaining wall are the maximum allowed at 10625 Moccasin Road, APNS 126-01101-002003, 004-N016, and a portion of 12601201016. This is a civic zoning. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross, and again, staff recommends approval. Moving on to number 10 is an EOT 45497, applicant Walgreen Company. Owner Centennial Gateway LLC, for a possible action on a request for an extension of time of a special use permit, SUP 38213, for an 8-foot 80-something foot... I got a little hole in my thing, so it's an 8-something square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 15,000-square-foot retail establishment, and that's located at 5610 Centennial Center Boulevard, Ward 6, and Councilman Ross's Ward. Again, staff recommends approval. Moving on to number 11, we have a TMP 45527, Andorra and Castillo, applicant Woodside Homes, owner Woodside Polymer LLC, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 106-foot lot, 106-lot, single-family residential subdivision at the southwest corner of Fox Hills Drive and Alta. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Beers, and again, staff recommends approval. Moving on to number 12, it's a TMP 45230. The applicant is Greystone Nevada LLC. The owner is Howard Hughes Corporation LLC, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for an 84-lot, single-family residential subdivision at the southeast corner of Fox Hill Drive and Paseo Breeze Drive. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Beers's Ward, and this, again, staff recommends approval. Moving on to number 13, we have a TMP 45536, The Orchids at Grand Teton in Tenaya. The applicant is Dr. Horton, owner Spinnaker Homes, 11 LLC, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 100-lot, single-family residential subdivision adjacent to the southwest corner of Grand Teton Drive and Tenaya Way. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross's Ward, and again, staff recommends approval on that item. Does anybody wish to pull or speak on any of these items? If none, so here we'll hear a motion from Commissioner Flengus.
Before voting, Madam Chairman, I need to abstain on item number 13. I have done legal work for the owner on that item, and out of an abundance of caution, I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I need to abstain on item 7, as much as I own an interest in a property directly across the street from this.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. With that in mind, we'll ask Commissioner Goines to make the motion with the remarks from Commissioner Truesdale and Commissioner Flengus.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent items as read into records, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions, and also denote the abstentions from Commissioner Flengus and Truesdale.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Please vote. Thank you, and that motion passes.
Madam Chair, item number 7 will go forward to the August 15th City Council meeting. Items number 8 through 13 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Moving on now to the one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. The first one is item number 14. It is an SUP 45533. Applicant owner is Great Wash Park LLC, for possible action on a request for a major amendment of a special use permit, SUP 4748, to reduce the building area of an approved liquor establishment tavern within a 28.44-acre mixed-use development from 9,330 square feet to 3,285 square feet at 430 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite Number 170. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Beers's Ward. Staff is recommending approval. The second one, under one motion, one vote, is a vacation item, 45462. Applicant is Chrissy Builders, owner Trophy Hills Residence Trust et al., for possible action on a petition to vacate the public sewer and drainage easements on a portion of the south side of Trophy Hills Drive and a portion of the north side of Players Club Drive, Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Again, staff is recommending approval. And if there's anybody here that wishes to speak on these items, please come forward now. If not, we'll be ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I have a question on item 15 for staff. It says drainage easements, but on the maps, it says right-of-way, and I'm just curious if these are right-of-way or drainage, or private streets, or public streets.
Mr. Lucian?
Through you, Madam Chairman. They are private streets with public drainage and public sewer easements.
So we're only voting to vacate the sewer easements, and we're not dealing with the right-of-way, right?
There is no right-of-way in this location.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, on item 15, I had a business relationship with the applicant, and so out of an abundance of caution, I'd like the record to reflect, and I'm abstaining on item 15.
Thank you. With that in mind, we'll entertain a motion from Commissioner Goines.
Madam Chair, one motion, one vote. Items moved to approve both items, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions, and also to reflect Commissioner Flengus's abstention on item 15.
Thank you. That passes. We're now going to move forward to item number...
Madam Chair, if I might just interject. Items 14 and 15 are both final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, out of respect for Mr. Bob Gronhour, we're going to move up item number 24 forward because the proud father's son is playing in the Little League World Series, and we hope this isn't the last time he sees it, but we don't want him to miss tonight's game. So with that, Mr. Gronhour, we are happy to hear your item.
His middle name Bryce Harper?
Number 24 is SUP 45455. Applicant is the ABC Stores. The owner is SMK Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 200-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 5,100-square-foot convenience store at 23 Fremont Street, Ward 3, Commissioner Councilman Coffin. And may we please have the staff report at this time.
Madam Chair, this site currently is entitled with a packaged liquor store off-sale use with multiple review of conditions and multiple required reviews. The applicant is seeking to increase the restriction on the packaged liquor store from 80 square feet to 200 square feet. At the time of the original application, the accessory package liquor off-sale use was not part of our code, and they were attempting to meet the reduced package liquor store at the time. Working with the applicant, we have determined that maybe a brand-new special use permit might clear up all of the confusion related to the multiple required reviews, multiple review of conditions, and the original use permit. As such, the applicant has made an application for an accessory package liquor off-sale use. The proposed retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale complies with all minimum special use requirements. There are no protected uses within 400 feet of this proposal, and the location is compatible and harmonious with the other uses in the area, so staff does recommend approval of this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rankin. Good evening.
I apologize, Madam Chair. We need to take a quick break. We're having a little bit of a technical problem here. If at all possible, could we please take just a quick break?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Gronhour.
That's how things...
We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. Thank you. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. Thank you. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes. We apologize for the delay. Things should be moving forward in just a few minutes.
Madam Chair, thank you for waiting. We're ready to start.
Thank you very much. Getting back to Mr. Gronhour's item, which is number 24, it reads again, if I may repeat it, SUP 45455. The applicant is ABC Stores. Owner is SMK Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 200-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 5,100-square-foot convenience store at 23 Fremont Street. This is in Ward 3. This is Councilman Coffin's Ward. And staff, could you please repeat the recommendation?
Once again, this application already has a packaged liquor store use as part of original approval, and multiple required reviews with conditions on those required reviews and review of conditions. As such, it was staff and the applicant both agreed that it would be best to make a new application for accessory package liquor off-sale, as it meets the qualifications of that being less than 10% of the square footage of the total area. Staff finds that the accessory package liquor off-sale complies with all minimum special use permit requirements. There are no protected uses within the 400 feet of this proposal, and the use itself can be conducted in a manner that's compatible and harmonious with surrounding uses, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much, staff. Good evening, Mr. Gronhour.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Bob Gronhour, 8345 West Sunset Road. I want to thank you for moving this item up. I have another item, 16, which will be after this, but as Murphy's Law is, when you're in a hurry, some things sometimes hold you up a little bit more than you expected. That being said, I'd like to just incorporate, basically, Mr. Rankin's comments. I don't think I need to say anything else with respect to his special use permit outside that I'm here representing ABC Stores. They've been at the Fremont location for the last 12 years. About 12 years ago, they made a significant investment into Las Vegas, and Fremont Street is their first store, and since then, they've been making other additional construction projects within the business itself, and they put a lot of money into the store, and they're a good business partner downtown, and we're asking you to approve the special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Gronhour. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to our Commissioners.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just as a disclosure, I have done work for ABC Stores in the past in securing locations for them. I currently am not doing anything, and I don't have outstanding work products with them, and don't feel there'd be any conflict for voting on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale.
What I can tell you is, just briefly, this store is one of the... When they came downtown, they made a bigger investment than almost, other than the casinos, anybody else down there, in taking this 6,000-plus-square-foot two-story building and completely redoing it. It's probably one of the best examples of what can happen on a positive note downtown, and surprisingly, the kind of concerns that we've had in other locations along Fremont Street for different uses, this one is always pristine. I'm absolutely amazed by it and how it's run, so in that regard, I would support the item.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale, does anybody else wish to speak, or are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval on item 24. for approval on item 24, SUP 45455.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, that item will be final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
I forgot about item 16, so we'll do that now, Mr. Gronauer. Are we -- Madam Clerk, are we ready? Thank you. Item 16 is a variance 45260. The applicant owner is Dr. Horton Incorporated for possible -- Dr. Horton, excuse me, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a four-foot corner side yard setback for a proposed single-family residence where 10 feet is required at 9358 Whittick Avenue. This falls in Ward 6, and may we please have a staff report, as staff is recommending denial on this item.
Chairwoman Quinn, when Site Development Plan Review, SDR 12103, was approved for this residential development, it was assumed that a common lot would exist along teepee lane for the provision of a multi-use trail. When the final map was recorded, the entitled trail width was dedicated as right-of-way, and no common lot was provided. The result of this omission is that the subject site is now a corner lot and required to have a 10-foot corner side yard setback along the west side rather than the anticipated five-foot side yard setback. Staff could support this variance request if the minimum side yard setback of five feet were to be met as the lot was intended. However, the applicant is now requesting a setback of less than five feet. Therefore, staff is recommending denial, as the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a model home that the site is not able to accommodate. If denied, the development of the site must comply with all minimum setback requirements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gebkeke. Good evening, Mr. Gronauer.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing Dr. Horton in this matter. This is a variance request, as your staff has mentioned. We do believe we do have a unique circumstances here. If you take a look on the overhead here that I have, the site plan itself, number one, this is a variance for one lot in the subdivision itself. It's a corner side yard setback. As you know and are aware, typically, side yard setbacks are a minimum five feet. However, when you're at the corner, such as this lot here, you're supposed to be 10 feet on the side. As staff has mentioned in so many words, we had a mistake through the engineering process, unintended consequence. However, we think with the unique circumstance here, if you take a look on the overhead, a long teepee, as you can see, there's five feet of landscaping, five-foot sidewalk, and five feet of landscaping. Typically, in the city code, you have six feet of landscaping, five-foot sidewalk, which is about 11-foot area for a common element. Here, we have about 15 feet. We believe that this has not imposed any public safety concerns with respect to the corner side yard setback, but in addition, one of the things that we're willing to do, and I don't believe you could add a condition on to this, but one of the things that we're going to be doing here, too, is moving the front yard setback from 20 feet to 25 feet, which we believe is allowable under our own proposal. The backyard is 33 feet deep. By moving the lot or the house back, that even improves the area for, if there's any concerns for the site visibility in this area. That being said, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gronauer. Is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward. If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up to the planning Commissioners. Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Gronauer about this. Inasmuch as this is one lot, it's a corner lot, side yard setback, and because we have the 15 feet, whereas, you know, we're normally looking at 11, when we consider the entire area, it's my opinion that it does justify a variance in this condition. I don't think there are any lines of sight concerns, and with that, I'd be happy to hear any comments from my fellow Commissioners, but my vote will be that we approve this request.
Looks like we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to item 16, VAR 45260, my motion is to approve that item, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Moody. That motion is for approval. Please vote. And that motion passes. Mr. Gronauer, have a nice evening.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate you moving 24 up to the front. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care.
And Madam Chair, item 16 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, moving on now to item number 20. Item number 20 is related to item number 21, and the first one is a GPA 45405. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to MXU Mixed-Used at 310 South Ninth Street. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffins' Ward. May we please have a staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the subject site is currently owned by the City of Las Vegas, but is intended to be sold to the private sector as surplus property. These requests would amend the general plan designation and zoning district to allow the use and possible future redevelopment of the property by the private sector. The proposed general plan designation of MXU Mixed-Use and corresponding C2 General Commercial Zoning District are consistent with those in the immediate area and will allow for uses that are compatible with the surrounding adjacent uses. Staff is recommending approval of both requests. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gebke, is there anyone here to speak from staff on this item? No. I mean, is there anyone here that wishes to speak about this from the public with any concerns? If not, we'll open it up to the Planning Commission and for a possible motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. So, the city currently owns this property and is wanting to sell it, and is currently the senior center. Changing this to mixed use will allow a variety of residential and commercial uses?
Chairwoman Quinn, through you.
Yes.
The change to the MXU does allow a variety of uses. The C2 would limit those uses to commercial uses or along those lines. Basically, the existing general plan of public facilities and zoning of CV allows the property to be used by public and quasi-public entities. So in order for that to be sold and used by the private sector, the general plan and zoning have to be consistent with those uses.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? If not, we'll be ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, on item number 20, GPA 45405, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. A yes vote would be for approval. Thank you, and that motion passes. And now we'll be ready for a motion for number 21.
Madam Chair, on item number 21, ZON 45406, rezone, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. That motion is also for an approval. That motion also passes.
Madam Chair, items 20 and 21 will go forward to the August 15 City Council meeting.
Thank you, Director. We're moving on now to related items 22 and 23. Item number 22 is variance 45491. The applicant owner is the Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 43 parking spaces where 70 are required at 1931 Stella Lake Street. This is in Ward 4, Councilman Barlow's Ward. Ward 5, excuse me. And also, it's connected to item number 23, SDR 45490, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to an improved site development plan review, SDR 7218, for an 8,650-square-foot two-story addition to an existing 12,600-square-foot office building. On both items, staff is recommending denial. Both items fall in Councilman Barlow's Ward. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, before you do that, I just looked at this. I'm going to be abstaining on this item, as my company is a workforce connections, provides the funding to this organization to put on their work readiness program, so I will be abstaining.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goinz. Staff, may we have your report, please?
Chairwoman Quinn, the applicant is proposing an addition to an existing office building. The addition is aesthetically compatible with the existing structure and with development in the area. However, no additional onsite parking is provided to meet the increased parking requirement. Additional parking is provided within an existing lot on the northeastern portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 13921313020. However, these spaces are located approximately 800 feet from the subject site, which exceeds the maximum distance of 300 feet that is allowed by Title 19 for off-site or shared parking. A parking variance is therefore required. As the site cannot accommodate the required parking for the proposed building addition, and no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to justify the request, staff recommends denial of the variance and the accompanying site development plan review. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gebkeke. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Robert Messiana, 8429 Baypoint Drive, representing Fit for an Independent Tomorrow. Request fully, or request that you approve these items. For those of you who are not familiar with Fit for an Independent Tomorrow, they provide education and resources for unemployed and underemployed individuals to get better jobs. With this economy, their need, the need for their services increased greatly, and that's why we're requesting to build this addition for additional training spaces. Most of their clientele, by the very nature, come to the site either via public transportation or are dropped off or carpool, so their need for individual private vehicle parking is very minimal. They have secured an off-site parking agreement for the additional spaces that would be required by code for these spots. That is currently completed and in use by staff members. Their clientele would not use that off-site parking. It would just be strictly for their staff members. So we feel that with this off-site parking, we do comply with the intent of the code, and we don't feel that the site would be compromised with any parking issues. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward now. If not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to our planning Commissioners. Commissioner Trusdale.
Can you describe again where your shared parking is? Or your off-site parking?
The off-site parking is located, basically, around the corner. There is a medical office building that was recently constructed, and we've got the parking on the north edge of that site.
Because, I mean...
It's within about 800 walking feet, and it's currently being used by the staff. All the staff currently park in that lot.
How many staff will you have here when this is complete?
The staff really is not going to increase with this addition, the current staff levels. Most of the spaces are really going to be training spaces, so the staff will remain the same. I don't know exactly how many staffs they have currently.
Oh, because the plan I looked at just showed offices, so I guess that's, unless I'm misreading it.
The second floor is mainly classroom space.
Oh, okay. So based on the classroom space, potentially, you could have greater demand for parking if people did drive cars, if they didn't avail themselves of the public transit?
Correct, but the nature of their clientele are basically underemployed or unemployed people, so there's not a lot of people coming with their own personal transportation. In fact, the parking lot that they have now is rarely full.
I guess my concerns are generally in the enterprise park. A lot of the businesses that were built there had requirements to self-park, even though they had a cross-access. So if that's a requirement of this parcel, then you wouldn't meet that under the original development of this part of this project. And I do know with, I guess Cox over there and several of the other buildings, and there's a lot of training facilities, that there is, at least when I've been over in some of the areas of this, a significant shortage of parking. So I'm not sure if we're helping or hurting the success of this area.
This site was originally donated to the foundation by the city, and the city also was instrumental in gaining this off-site parking arrangement as well. The variance is for an office building, parking at an office building, you know, level of parking. This facility just simply does not have that number of cars.
Let's see if anybody else has any other comments or questions.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to have a comment? No. I guess we're ready for a motion, Commissioner Trusdale. Are you ready to make one? Okay. Okay, so does anybody else wish to entertain a motion on this item? Okay.
Madam Chair, I have real concerns about your parking, but I do support the program, and I know that, like you said, the city donated the property or however these things. I just... I will support the, you know, make a motion and...
With the off-site parking that we do have an agreement in place for, it does meet parking requirements for this size building. The problem is that we're far, the distance is farther away, so we can't count that off-site parking.
Oh, I understand. And based on that agreement, I will make a motion to follow staff's as-if-approved conditions of approval, and hopefully you prove us right and it's not an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trusdale. The motion was for approval. Please cast your vote. Yeses for the approval. Thank you, and that motion passes. Good luck to you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more item with that, and that is item SDR. I'm sorry. Oh, just a motion.
With regards to SDR 45490, move for approval.
Thank you. Yes vote would be for approval. And that also is about to... It was about to, and it did. So good luck to you, sir, and thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that items, actually, excuse me, both of those items, 22 and 23, will go forward to the August 15 City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're now moving on to related items number 25 and number 26. Number 25 is SUP 45845488. The applicant... The applicant is the Lake's Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses. The owner is Robert F. and Linda M. Moyer Trust, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed church, house of worship at the northeast corner of Buffalo Drive and El Parque Avenue. This is in Ward one, Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward. Staff is recommending approval. The companion item, sir, is SDR four-five-four-eight-nine, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed four thousand five hundred and seventy-six square foot church, house of worship. Staff also recommends approval, and this also is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward. If we may, if we may please have the staff report.
Madam Chair, this project meets all Title Nineteen development standards, conforms to the general plan designation for the area, and staff finds that this use is compatible with the surrounding development in the area, and does recommend approval of both applications. Please note, staff is recommending to amend condition number six, to read as follow. A technical landscape plan signed and sealed by a registered architect, landscape architect, residential designer, or civil engineer must be submitted prior or at the same time as submittal for a building permit. The landscape plan shall be amended to replace the Mondale pines specified along the east perimeter with twenty-four inch box-sized Arizona rosewood, rosewood trees, and then the rest of the condition to remain as written. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication. Also, there was a voluntary neighborhood meeting held, and that's part of your back, late submitted backup.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening. Mike Pirtle, fourteen-seventy-three Rancho Ridge Drive, Henderson, representing the applicant and owner. We have met with Councilwoman Tarkanian, met with the neighborhood. The staff conditions of approval reflect some of those meetings, and we're in agreement with them, and ask for your approval, and glad to get into any questions that you have.
Thank you. I think we might have a few, so hold tight. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward now. And I'd like to remind you, if you could just step aside, Mr. Pirtle, we have two microphones, and we're going to entertain one guest at each microphone, and we prefer that you don't repeat what somebody else says, but if in fact, just leave your name and address for the record, and we'll start with you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. First, I got to see Bryce Harper play in Toronto, and he's awesome. My name's Pamela Littleton.
Yeah, we can barely hear you.
My name is Pamela Littleton. I live at seven-seven-five-five El Parque Avenue, directly across the street from the site. Our group of homes has been there since nineteen eighty, and some of us have been there since then. I've been in my home twenty-eight years. We were the first group of homes in that area with copying the format of Section Ten, so that we faced the streets, trying to make it a neighborhood. The area has continued to grow and become a very desirable place to live. With the state of the economy, most of us have chosen to stay in the area and upgrade or remodel our homes, and consequently, the neighborhood. Unfortunately, and despite the objection of a very strong homeowners association, the Social Security Building was allowed to be put on Buffalo. That has set in motion the possibility for this action, we believe. We realize cities grow and things change to benefit the community. There are already three churches between Buffalo and Tenea, the Social Security Building with the doctor's office, sports complex on Buffalo, and a park on Oke and Tenea, all within a half a mile of this site. We feel to allow any more non-R-E development on Buffalo will severely affect our neighborhood and quality of life, and property values will continue to drop. Jones Boulevard is a perfect example of a street that has been put in limbo for the past fifteen years due to a mix of use and zoning in an originally rural residential area. We need to be proactive now to avoid this from happening to Buffalo. An example of a church impact on our neighborhood is the Catholic Church, which I attend. Their satellite parking is diagonal to the church. The worshippers still park on the streets in front of people's homes when the parking lot is virtually empty. I have pictures from last Sunday's service just to prove it. Some of the people have to put cones out in front of their houses to have on Saturday evenings and Sundays for barbecues, so that people can park there, and the parking lot, again, is empty. And again, I have photos, if you would like to see them. Also, if there's parking on Buffalo, that's quite a busy street, and that would be a hazard to drivers as well as the worshippers. So the property is in escrow, and plans are ready for submittal, but there has not seemed to be, have been a traffic study, drainage study, or a site plan that was shown to us at a meeting that was held a week ago, which was over the Fourth of July holiday, and...
Excuse me. Pamela, could you repeat? There was no site plan, and what else?
To our, we just saw, sort of, what's on the screen, but not, no, it wasn't in detail. It didn't have any dimensions or anything on it. And I'm, I'm, we're not aware of any kind of a drainage plan or traffic study.
Okay.
And I know somebody did specifically ask about that. I didn't see that gentleman here tonight. Flooding is already an issue on El Parque. I've looked out to see my mailbox float down, that was on a four-by-four post float down the street, and it appears that the runoff in traffic will most likely be exiting on the south side of the parking, of the site, which would be onto El Parque, diverting probably the water as well as most of the traffic through the residential area and in front of homes that do front that street. The lighting is another issue for this area. How high is it? How many? What way will it point? The people that, on backup to that, there's some homes that their fence is directly online. I'm sure the lights will be shining in their windows, if not just into their backyard. The parking lot will possibly draw others to use it after and between religious services. Since this, since the Social Security Building has been put up, my home has been broken into three times, two of them from people just walking in, and another was a car that drove. As stated above, our biggest concern is that this, this will open the door for the rest of the residential estate lots to become non-residential and seal our fate to that of Jones Boulevard and make it virtually impossible to sell our homes. If the landowners and future builders could depend on Buffalo remaining residential, they would be more apt to commit to developing the remaining lots. And if you stand on any corner between El Parque and Oke, all you see are residences. After last week's meeting, most of us went away feeling totally defeated, in that there was no reason to even show up tonight. I, I know a lot of people aren't here. We didn't have any way to get ahold of them to tell them that there's still hope. We also feel that having only a week, and that being the holiday week, we have not had sufficient time to have a proper homeowners' neighborhood meeting. So, we would, I don't know if it's possible to put this in a variance, so we can get more facts.
That'll be something we'll, we'll discuss, but we definitely have taken all of your heartfelt considerations to heed, and we appreciate the time that you've put into this, and we look forward to hearing now from your next neighbor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bill Wilson. I live at nineteen thirty-one Pagel Court, and I back up to that property. And I do have some pictures I would like to show.
We'd love to see them.
Okay.
Can you put some on the overhead thing? Okay.
I can do that, too.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Does that work like that?
The other way. It's kind of twisted. Bill, before we get started, how high is that wall?
That wall varies from three and a half to four and a half feet.
Yeah, it staggers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And...
Thank you.
My major concern is that, well, we're concerned about what's going to happen to Buffalo, all along Buffalo with the addition of the church. We now have a Social Security Office, and with the Social Security Office and this church, and across the street is a park, and also the, the Parks and Recreation Building right across on Oke and Buffalo, there's a lot of commercial development that's going in. So we are concerned about that. We're also concerned about the potential noise of the church and the parking lot. There are several different times that these church members will meet. They will meet in the mornings, from seven-thirty or eight o'clock until nine-thirty. They will meet several times during the day. There'll be several shifts coming through. In addition, they meet at night, on at least three nights, and they basically said they meet maybe five to seven nights a week, depending on, you know, their services. And, you know, I don't have anything against the church. I, I don't have, I don't have that kind of a concern about them being a neighbor. What I have a concern about is the number of meetings at the location will cause a lot of noise, especially to me, which backs right up to my property that you can see here, and to my neighbors. I am the Secretary of the Pagel Court Homeowners Association also.
Right.
And I'm concerned about the slope of that lot. The slope of that lot slopes down into our backyard. You can stand at, at the back of that lot and look right into my backyard, and the fence comes to about this high, and so, you know...
Excuse me one minute, sir. Lucian, has there been a drainage study done with this concern?
Madam Chairman, to my knowledge, there has not, but condition thirteen of the site development plan review does require a drainage study to be done.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate this beautiful presentation. I think we understand very much where you're coming from.
Well, I do have a couple of other items that I do need to talk about. If this does get approved...
Right.
Okay? Then the trees are, we're very concerned about. They did have pine trees that they were going to put in, and we get pine needles in our pool, and I can't keep it clean. And none of our neighbors can, and all of our backyards face that area, and there are going to be pine needles all over the place.
Right.
Now, they have changed that to some other tree in their, in their development, and that change that was put in, I'm not familiar with that tree. So if it has needles, I'm still against it.
Right.
Okay? Now, we recommended cypress trees if they were going to get this approved. We recommended that they put a line of cypress trees through there that would, would help, and also, we requested, and they seem to acknowledge that we probably should have our wall built up, and they seem to think that they could increase the size of our wall or raise our back wall for us. However, since then, now, they said that at the meeting, but since then, they've said that they don't have that in their budget. So they've kind of backed out on that position.
Right.
So we are concerned that we won't have a privacy wall, and that the trees that they're putting in is not going to be private enough, so we need both. We think we need the buffer of the trees, and we need the wall built up.
It sounds to me, Bill, that there's just a lot of lack of communication going on between the two sides, so...
Sounds like it.
But let's see what we can get done for, for you, and, and as well for the applicant.
All right.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward and state your name and address, sir, for the record.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Gary Mahoney, nineteen oh-one Pagel Court, and my property also backs up to this proposed project. I don't have anything new to add. I just want to voice, I agree with the previous two speakers. I certainly would like the wall raised, and I certainly would like to have cypress trees instead of the rosewood trees.
Right.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this item? Please come forward now.
Chairman and Planning Commissioners, I'm Arnold Stock, two-seven-zero-one Alta Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, representing my client, Mary Bartza's Thirteen LLC. We are the property owners on the, on the northerly portion of the site, immediately next door, and own the site that's on, on Buffalo and Oke. First and foremost, I want to say on behalf of my client that they're not opposing the use. What we do want is the opportunity to meet with the church and with their representatives and their consultants to work on the issues of the site plan that are our biggest concern to us. One is the ingress egress issue on, on Parque Avenue, on the front edge. We think that, A, it doesn't belong there, and I understand that there are certain planning ordinances and regulations that, that dictate certain things like that, but we think if there is going to be one, there should be a crash gate there to avoid the parking for the neighbors, in the neighborhood. Second is the architectural aesthetic details of the building, and although I do realize that there's no design controls that the, the planning department really has over it, there are some issues I want to raise and go on the record of. One is that there's four elevations on the building. There's no windows on the building whatsoever. The only fenestration that the building has is the double-entry door into the Kingdom Hall. The second is that there's a band of stone, and I, and the other issue is that the, the drawings that we reviewed at the meeting, to me, were not legible, and we couldn't, we just, I couldn't understand a lot of what they were doing, which could be easily resolved with a sit-down with the, with the developer and the church's architect and planners. It appeared that there's a limited amount of stone that looked to be just very, very low with an ephesus band around the building, and we just find the building to be a very basic vanilla shell building with no particular architectural character or detail. I do also understand that the church may or may not have philosophical issues with why they have their building appear that way, but if we're looking to blend something along that corridor, which avoids, and a lot of the neighbors express the issue of avoiding it becoming another Jones Boulevard, if development is to occur there, at least I think it should have some good landscape principles, some decent architectural principles, and something that really blends in or really complements the amount of money that the neighbors have spent on the neighboring houses is extraordinary in most cases.
I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Stark, is that there's just a lot of lack of communication here. I mean, we had a little neighborhood meeting, and, you know, so I'm taking all of your comments very seriously, as well as this commission, and I think there's nothing else to add. We're going to move on to the next person.
I have a few more really quick points.
Really quick ones?
Um, the CMU height of the wall, which I know has been raised, an intense landscape buffer should really be in there, and the trash enclosure, I believe, should be moved away from the residential edge, which is very close to now, and the area lighting definition is a big thing for us. So, thank you all very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this application? If not, we'd like to hear back from you, sir. You've got a lot of things to address, so if we could, I don't want to speed you up, but if you could go through them in order. I've kept a list. I hope you've kept a list, so let's start with whatever you want to start with first.
Well, again, appreciate the input from the neighbors. That is a lot of, of what we heard when we met with them, and we've got some, we think, answers to address some of their concerns, and hopefully yours as well. As far as the proposing house of worship here, you know, they're, they're always subject to use permits. It's allowed by the code, subject to your approval. Where the parking is concerned, right now, we're required forty-seven parking spaces. We're providing more than twice that to make sure that we don't put anybody on the street. Now, that, that's what, what we can do to, to try and accommodate that. We discourage parking on the street and make sure that it happens on the site. Where the drainage study, technical drainage study is concerned, that, that is what will happen down the road, subject to those, those approvals. We know that there's some concern with the height of that wall and what that will do. On the site plan, it's noted that there's a six-foot, we would be installing a six-foot screen wall on our property, and that would be from, of course, the grade. And right now, there's, looks to be about a two-to, two-and-a-half-foot grade difference between our site and the neighbor's site, and so, once we go ahead and install that screen wall, really from the neighbor's side, it's going to appear to be probably eight, eight feet or more from their backyard. So where privacy issues are concerned, and looking down into their, their yard, we don't believe that that's going to be a problem, because we are going to go ahead and put up a, a six-foot wall. The details of that, we, we worked with neighbors to, to figure out the best way to do that, because...
Right.
Just constructability issues. The other thing that we've done is, is that there's a twenty-three-foot landscape buffer between that, the wall that's in question, between their backyard and the edge of the parking lot. So we are really discouraging people from, you know, going up against that wall and, invading their privacy. The cars are parking twenty-three feet away from that wall and twenty-three feet away from the backyard, which is, is this piece here. On the, the north side, there's a, an intense landscape buffer been provided. You know, we've really treated this as a commercial project, recognizing that there's a less intense use, at least to the east. It's already zoning to the, the north, so potentially a less intense use there. We've got trees spaced 20 feet on center. As we talked about, the Mondale pines, we took those out. I know there's a recommendation for cypress trees. And looking at our, you know, getting recommendations of our own, the Arizona rosewood was recommended as a drought tolerant species. It's also a very nice screen type tree. It's got a leaf similar to, say, an oleander. It's kind of an oleander replacement. Real short flowering season, so the trash is minimal. There are no, there are no pine needles. So we feel like that, that would be a reasonable...
I, I don't mean any disrespect to stop you right here, but here's what the issue is. The issue is, is you can tell us all day long what you're going to do and what, what's going to happen, but unless if it's been submitted through staff, namely your lighting package, your landscape package, and they've already seen it and we approve it, we're kind of like a puff of smoke right now because, it's not that I don't believe you, because I've had other applicants come in front of me and do exactly what they said they're going to do, and they've done it. But here's the, the issue that I have, and, and then I'm going to open it up to my Planning Commission, is that, first of all, when you hold a neighborhood meeting in the middle of July, namely like the Fourth of July week, 99% of most neighborhoods are, they've traveled, they've gone somewhere else, and, and they're not home. So we're not being fair to the people that have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into their homes, number one. So my, my first suggestion, even though I can't make a motion of any sort, would be that we need to start with a, a neighborhood meeting at a time when more people can attend. My second suggestion is, is that we need to see this lighting plan. I mean, I want, I mean, you could hand it to me all night long, but until it's with the city staff and been approved by the city staff, it, it really, I can't say yea or nay because I've, that's not my job. So I'm going to not cut you off at the hips, but I'm just going to kind of open it up to my Planning Commissioners because I want to see where they're coming from, just because I think that when there's a project of this magnitude, and we've had one, we had the, the beautiful Jewish temple school come out and do kind of what you're talking about doing, and they followed through and they did everything to the T for Ward 1 and for our councilwoman. But they did it in the right order. I kind of feel like we're throwing things at us and we're not kind of in the right plan that we should be at. So if you don't mind, sir, I'm going to open this meeting up now to our Planning Commission, and they can ask you questions and you can answer them, but by telling us everything that you're going to do or want to do or want to say, it just doesn't mean anything to me because it's not set in stone, which the stone is right over here, our staff. So with that in mind, if you don't mind, let's have the, our Planning Commission see what they have to say, starting with Commissioner Boner, sir. Is that your name? Yeah, Boner.
Yeah, I have a...
Because you're real familiar with drainage and stuff.
That's where I'm going.
How'd I know?
I'd like to pass a question on to staff about the, the height of the wall and what it's measured from, and when there's two properties disparaged between that common property line, which one governs? Can you give us guidelines on that?
Through you, Madam Chair. The requirements for, for a wall are six feet to eight feet tall. When there are two walls abutting each other, Title 19 requires either one wall to be set off three feet, a minimum of three feet, or it needs to be less than eight inches away, and that space needs to be filled with cementatious material and capped.
And what about, who judges when the six or the eight start from?
Per, per Title 19, the height of the wall is measured from the greatest height on whichever side it's on. So if it's a six-foot wall on one side and eight feet on the other, it would be determined to be an eight-foot wall.
Another question I have through you, Madam Chair, is the, the drainage, or the lay of the site, is it, is it basically flowing to the east toward the residences? Can it be graded to exit and drain out the El Parque side?
Madam Chair, through you. Yeah, the contours go to the east and just from looking at a rough grading plan, it would be able to, they'd be able to capture the water and it would come out El Parque.
So they would, they may have to raise the north end of the site in order to get it to flow south?
Through you, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't have that much detail to be able to tell you how much they'd have to raise it, but they would have to drain, you know...
It has to flow downhill.
Have to flow to, it has to flow downhill to El Parque.
Okay. I guess I have concerns that at any kind of meeting, that there should be at least a preliminary grading plan to see how that grading plan would affect the wall or the walls, plural, if there need be, because I think the, the separation of the, the two disparate uses certainly should be done with, with a good delicacy between the applicant and the neighboring properties. I think that would set the stage properly for at least talking about how the rest of the property can be developed, but grading's one of the first things that should be looked into with some detail. I'll pass for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Shloschman.
Madam Chair, one of the, just reiterating what Doug said, the walls either had to be three feet apart or within eight inches and filled with cement across the top to keep from having a no man's land. So if you have this three feet, who's going to maintain all the weeds and the trash bags and everything that, that flows in between those two walls? And then if you butt into the other retaining wall, you're going to have certain structural issues trying, trying to engineer a wall that much higher than the existing wall. And because of a portion of that just screening wall and not retaining, you could be putting a lot of excess pressure on to the neighbor's wall. So it might be wise to hold this for 30 days and look into those issues and meet with the neighbors and see if you can come up with a plan on your grading, your walls, and set us fine some of the concerns that the neighbors have here.
Thank you, Commissioner Shloschman. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I have a question about the, the windows. And frankly, I've always wondered, is this a doctrinal thing or is this a financial thing?
It's a financial, it's a pragmatic thing. The, from a vandalism standpoint, I mean, the, the building is not used very frequently during the day. Daylighting is, is not, not typically something that is incorporated in the building, but it's really more of a vandalism protection. So that's it.
Let me just say, generally, I'm supportive of a church coming in, but the devil's in the details, and that pun's intended. You're going to have some neighbors that you're, the applicant's going to be living with for a long time, and I think it's important to get into those details, to come up with some, some common ground, and I would also be supportive of a, a short hold on this to try and work some of those out.
And we'd be agreeable to that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Commissioner Trusell?
If, if the Commissioners want to hold this and they, they want to direct the applicant to address some of these concerns, I think that's reasonable. I don't believe this was required a public meeting as much as they offered one, so they, even though it, it fell in a horrible time of the week or, or for the, I'm surprised anybody's going to a meeting in this heat, but the, the fact is, the applicant did make, make some effort. But I, I, I hear a lot of little things here that start to sound like we want to change our zoning entitlements, requiring a, a more specific drainage. This isn't the side of a hill. This is on a major arterial. And these homes that are built east of here all had significant engineers and, and built up pads above grade. So I, I'm concerned that we, we don't set a standard on this church that is greater than the standard we'd want anybody else to bring before us. And in all due respect to Mr. Stock, you're here and you, you mentioned you represent the property owners to the north. Your own applications on similar property, or properties, not similar, but owned by that own, that same applicant, we were lucky to get a landscaping plan with a half a tree on it. So to, to use that as a legitimate criticism of, of their application was a little disingenuous. I, I just, I believe the church has the right to get every opportunity to be heard and every consideration through our, our codes and our standards, and that's all I'm concerned. If we, if we send this back and we ask the neighbors to participate, it has to be on the foot, level footing of how we would judge any other property. And that's, that's my comment.
Commissioner Goins?
Just a quick comment. I went by there today, stopped by Ms. Littleton's house, and we, I missed her by about 10 minutes, but we spoke on the phone. And, you know, I, I believe although a neighborhood meeting is not required, and I don't want to sound like I'm repeating everything, but I think there needs to be a, a meeting of the minds with the neighbors. One of my concerns about the houses to the, to the east of this would be, you know, you're going from a, you're going, you may end up with an eight-foot wall, and, and sometimes most eight-foot walls I know are, are in juvenile or penal systems, and, and you have to come out and look, look at wrought, wrought iron up at the top or barbed wire. So I don't want you to feel imprisoned in your, in your backyard. But also drainage, you know, and talking to Ms. Littleton, she has a, now has her mailbox built into her fence, and, and she told me because years ago, when it rained, her mailbox used to float east down El Parque, and she had to go catch it. So drainage and, and issues like that are a concern to me, but also just to have the neighbors buy in and input, I think is, is imperative in this, in this application. So I, I would support holding it and would appreciate the church offering to host another neighborhood meeting, hopefully after 7:00 PM in the evening.
And if I just may add one more thing before a motion is made, and also the lighting package, that's so important because we don't have it in our backup, and, you know, we don't know if the lights are going to be right in someone's backyard or shooting straight up in the air, so that's another thing. You've got a lot of things to hit with these, to hit, you know? One more thing.
We really appreciate the, the feedback that we're getting, and again, the comments of the neighbors. A lot of the things that we've talked about, you know, either with the, the technical drainage study is something that typically happens beyond this, this process. We cannot flood their yards. We cannot add, add water to the street. That's not, it's just not good practice. The lights are shown on the site plan. They are, talked about as having full cutoff lenses on them. And so, I, I do think we've addressed a great number of the things that you were hearing on the plans that are, have been submitted and have been set in stone. You know, I would be glad to go through those more, but it sounds like, you know, we'd be doing ourselves more of a favor to go ahead and ask this be held in advance, meet with the neighbors and, and make sure that everybody's on the same page...
Right.
...and understands what has been put in front of them.
And I just want to say before the motion is made that I, that I hope whoever makes the motion, that the neighborhood meeting is towards the end of the 30th day, not like next week. I think there's a lot of stuff to be caught in a very big net, and I don't find at all a way that I could impossibly approve something like this because it, to me, there's no answers yet. The, the line's been thrown out, but we haven't brought in the fish. So with that, I'm going to let Commissioner Goins make the motion at his discretion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be glad to make a supportive motion. Just, just one more comment. I noticed that you, you said you approach this as, as a commercial. And I think what you hear from the neighbors is, they don't want commercial. Commercial has crept into their area and they want to see this blend as, as much residential as you can. And I, and I think if you talk with the neighbors and listen to them, I think we'll get a lot further down the street than approaching this as, like this is a commercial building. So with that, I'll make a motion to hold this item for approximately 45 days. We'll give you ample time to, to, to pull together a neighborhood meeting, get the notices out, and then have the residents there.
Commissioner Goins, if I might just comment, 45 days doesn't match up with the schedule for Planning Commission meetings. It would either need to be 30 days or 60 days.
Let's go 60. And so my motion would be to hold Item 25 SUP 45488 for 60 days.
That, that would be the September 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. The motion's made on the floor to hold it for 60 days. A yes vote would be to hold the motion, the item.
Does the hold require, have a requirement for the meeting, a neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, I thought that was understood, but I will, now that the motion's been voted, I don't know if we need to do it, or, we have another item, which is a companion item, which I can put a motion on as well, which is the SDR, which...
I haven't voted on this one yet, so it doesn't...
Okay. Well, let's amend my motion to add a requirement to host a neighborhood meeting.
And that motion passes. Moving on now, now to SDR.
Item 26 SDR 45489, I'll move to hold that item for 60 days as well, and on that motion to also include that a neighborhood meeting be held.
That motion passes. And Mr. Prudell, I'd like, I don't often go to neighborhood meetings without the councilwoman's request, but this is one meeting that I would like to attend, so if you could please notify me, I'd like to be there as well so I can be as informed as your neighbors, because when I hear about it, it's, I'm easier, I'm a better learner if I'm there. So I'd appreciate being at that meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on now to Item Number 27, which is SUP 45528. The applicant is 7-Eleven Incorporated, owner Chitak Development Corporation, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler off sale establishment within a proposed 3,600 square foot convenience store at 2202 Paradise Road. This sits in Ward 3, Councilman Coffins Ward, and at this time, we'd like the staff report.
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as I have a financial interest in this shopping center.
Thank you, Commissioner Trusell.
Madam Chair, the proposed convenience store will be located in a tenant space that was formerly occupied by a non-conforming tavern. The beer wine cooler off sale establishment use is permitted in the C1 zoning district with approval of a special use permit. Staff finds that the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional protest and support since its publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Mark Hawkins, and this is Jeff Donata with the firm Fenimore Craig Jones Vargas. And we're here on behalf of the applicant. The address is, our address is 300 South Forest Street. We've gone through the conditions. As you noted, the, the store is on the northwest corner of Sahara and Paradise in the shopping center there, and we've gone through the conditions and... And we've gone through the conditions and we're fine with these conditions and request your approval this evening. We're here to answer any questions. And we've also requested this might be final action.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to our planning commissioners at this time.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I agree with staff that this use is less intense than the non-conforming tavern. And I think it fits well within that shopping center. But as I said previously, when I met with the applicant, said if you tried to bring an accessory use or a packaged liquor as an accessory use, you wouldn't be seeing my support. So, but I think for beer, wine, and cooler, it would be compatible with that little shopping center. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Schlossman.
Madam Chair, on item 27 SUP 45528, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. That motion is for approval following all staff's recommendations. Thank you. And that passes showing that Commissioner Truesdale abstained on that item this evening. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving right along to item 29 is SUP 45532. The applicant is On Call Cash Owner, W&amp;B Properties Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto title loan use within an existing building with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from residentially zoned property where 200 feet is required at 7626 West Cliff Drive. This is in Ward Two, Councilman Beers Ward. And may we please have the staff report as staff is recommending denial.
Chairwoman Quinn, the requested use of the subject site for an auto title loan facility cannot be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding adjacent uses as the minimum required distance separation from a residentially zoned property cannot be met. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the request. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicants.
Madam Chair, Commissioners Nathan Taylor representing the applicant. Just a couple of things. As staff stated, this is a special use permit for a check cashing auto title loan payday loan business. There's one change to our justification letter, and that is that at this time, we will not be including the gold buying, but we can address that later on down the road if the code is changed, which I understand from staff that they're working on a code change regarding gold buying. So that's not included in this application. Also, the applicant looked for spots in the city of Las Vegas for several months before deciding on this particular location. There's a few reasons why the applicant did decide on this location, first of which was that it's located on a very busy intersection, which is West Cliff and Buffalo. In this center is a, and I'm just going to list some of the businesses that are in the center, but one of which is a tavern, a convenience store, a gas station, two small restaurants. We believe our use is much less intense than the uses that are already there. Second of all, we comply with Title 19 as it relates to the distances between similar businesses. As you all know, we can't be within 1,000 feet of another like business and we are not. That was another reason why we're choosing this location. And finally, the applicant did do his due diligence prior to making application, and that was that he did voluntarily decide to have a neighborhood meeting somewhere within the process. Planning staff said that they weren't notified, but I went through staff to get the labels and to go through the proper procedure. So I apologize if there was something that we did or that we missed that planning wasn't there, so I just wanted to make that note. And then finally, the applicant has three locations in Greater Las Vegas. As of right now, the three locations that the applicant has are in Clark County. This would be his first location within the city of Las Vegas jurisdiction. And as indicated in our justification letter, which hopefully some of you were able to read, the applicant has said that he is okay with limited business hours and would be closed on Sundays. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is D.M. Creed. I live at 7,800 Toomich Avenue, Las Vegas. I've lived there for 28 years with my wife. Totally support this numerous reasons. Number one is other neighbors who have since passed away or moved away. We all worked very hard to help get this one location in the venue that's there as far as a small shopping complex, which helped us get the rest of the property behind it rezoned so we could fight down a high-density apartment complex there years ago and help us also get the rest of that intersection finished. So when I drive by there on a daily basis and I see an empty storefront, it bothers me because I want to see business there. Like I said, 28 years I've lived there, I go by it on a daily basis. I did go to the meeting. I found it very informative. I went also on my own with my wife. We checked out one of his other businesses. I found a very nice storefront. People are courteous. I talked to the business next to him. That gentleman told me the same thing. Good businessman, good neighbor. That's just what I have to say.
We appreciate you coming down here this evening.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Madam Chair, my name's Kirk Finley. I live at 11244 Axinter Court in Las Vegas. I represent WB Properties, the landlord, and more directly Stuart Apollo, the owner. This building is about 20-some years old. We had a long-term tenant in this center unit, Video Biz, for some 14 years. Since he vacated, this has sat vacant for quite some time. We've tried unsuccessfully with other tenants to put him in there. The unique shape of this makes it limited in what type of business can go in. We operate several centers in town, one of them in the county on West Cliff, I'm sorry, on DI and Durango, where our corporate office sits, sits right next to a like business. That's a check cashing business that has the same waiver of a zero lot line behind it. We did our own research with Michael, also went and looked at his properties. He's going to make a pretty large investment in a tenant improvement on this property. And we believe that it's a good addition to our center, and I believe he's a responsible businessman.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll listen to what our commissioners have to say now. Sir.
Madam Chair, I visited the site with the owner and their representative. And I am familiar with this center, and it really looks like a much less intense use than even the video store that used to be there. It can be a compatible neighbor, and I've seen a number of them. In fact, sat on a lot of hearings about check cashing as well as title loans. I guess if the people running it are the good people, you get a good neighbor out of them. And he's got a pretty good person that spoke on his behalf for his other operations. And I think this would be a fine addition to that shopping center.
Thank you. May I just ask our city attorney, Mr. Jerbik, sir? So if they do decide to do the gold in there, they would have to come back again in front of us to do the gold thing?
That's my understanding.
So this is just the application for this convenience store?
I think you said it as a condition. I see a look on your face, Mr. Rankin.
That's because there is an ordinance pending before City Council that's being introduced at the next City Council meeting where gold buying will become a permitted use. As a matter of fact, that text amendment did appear before this commission and was approved and moved forward to City Council in ordinance form. So it's possible if the City Council approves that amendment that gold buying will no longer require a special use permit. However, it will still require a privileged license for second-hand dealer.
Okay. I stand corrected. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Do any other commissioners wish to speak or say anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve SUP 45531 in accordance with the if-approved conditions of staff. And incidentally, it wasn't stated in the presentation, but in talking with the owner, they had volunteered some times that they would set to be further compatible with the neighborhood. And if they'd like to add those to the market, even though I don't think we've asked for it as a staff condition, I think they were very forward in offering those time constraints.
Just to clarify for the record, number one, this is item 45532.
Correct.
And then Commissioner, if we could just have the hours being offered clarified on the record so that the city clerk has noted that.
What I have is Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Sunday, they would be closed. I'd like to add that to my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. That motion is for approval with staff's recommendations and the additional condition. Thank you. And that motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good luck and have a nice evening.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to number 30, which is SUP 45539. The applicant owner is Rhino Realty of Nevada LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for motor vehicle sales used at 3250 East Sahara Avenue, Ward Three, and Councilman Coffins Ward. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we please have your report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the previous use of this subject site was a motor vehicle sales new use. The proposed use is similar in type and intensity to the previous use and is permitted in the C2 general commercial zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. It can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding adjacent uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name's Neil Tomlinson. I'm with the firm Snell &amp; Wilmer, 3883 Howard Hughes Parkway, Suite 1100. With me today also is the applicant, David Nielsen. He is with the applicant, Rhino Realty, and also chairman of low book sales and leasing. And also with us is Corey Solom, who's the project architect. Previously, on June 27th, the site development plan has been approved by staff. Staff's recommending approval. As far as we know, there's no opposition to the project. There's also support from the neighbor, Fairway Chevrolet, who is immediately next door. The letter of support is contained within your packet. We would ask that tonight's action be final action, and we're certainly here to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we will open it up now to our commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale.
Madam Chair, is there no comments? I would move for approval following all staff's recommendations. This has always been a car location and landscaping and design plans seem to be rather attractive for what's there.
It's also your motion for final action, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. And that motion passes. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
I'm going to pass item 31 and 32 over to Vice Chairman Flengus because my paper ripped and I can't read it. So I would be doing a good job. So go ahead. Thank you.
Item 31 is SUP 45540, special use permit. Applicant owner is James and Lori Johnson. This is for a possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler off-sale establishment within a proposed 2,450 square foot convenience store with a waiver to allow a 343-foot distance separation from a park where 400 feet is required at 2051 East Sahara Avenue, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward Three Coffin. And the related item, item number 32, is SDR 45542, Site Development Plan Review. Applicant owner again is James and Lori Johnson, for a possible action on a request for a Site Development Plan Review for a proposed 2,450 square foot convenience store on .47 acres at 2051 East Sahara Avenue, C1 Zone, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff?
Mr. Vice Chair, the proposed development will provide site improvements, including additional parking, landscaping, and the relocation and screening of illegally non-conforming liquid petroleum gas installation. Included with the request, the site plan is a special use permit for beer wine cooler off-sale use. The applicant is proposing substantial landscape improvements along the property lines where none are required and an attractive redevelopment of highly visible street corner commercial property. And staff does recommend approval of site plan review. However, staff finds that the beer wine cooler off-sale use is not compatible or harmonious with the surrounding land use as evidenced by the request of a waiver from a park. And staff does recommend denial of the special use permit. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 3900 Meadows Lane, representing the applicant. And as staff indicated, we are doing significant redevelopment of the property. We're actually adding landscaping where there is zero. We're required by code to have one handicap parking space, and we're providing an additional handicap parking space. We are relocating the propane gas to keep it on-site because a lot of the neighbors in the neighborhood use it, so we don't want to remove it. We're just putting it, I think, in a better, more protected location. But the problem is, without the ability to have beer and wine, then none of these improvements can happen because this is a potential purchaser who's making improvements to the building elevation, adding the landscaping. We've combined one of the, there's two driveways on Eastern, we're combining them into one, making it, I think, a lot safer. And again, adding landscaping, adding a little bit of square footage to the C store and then changing the elevation. I'm not really sure that our property is going to have an impact on the park if there, my understanding is there may be some issues with people drinking over in the park and all. But there's already a 7-Eleven on the east side of Eastern, and then there's a couple of restaurants that do serve beer and wine. And so I don't know that anybody would actually drive into our site, make a U-turn, go up to the park, or if they're walking, that they cross 110-foot right-of-way and then cross back over when it's just as easily, can use a 7-Eleven or whatever the restaurants have. So I don't know that we either, I don't think we enhance and I don't think we detract from the park. I think we're just, I think it's sort of a push. But I do think that the improvements that we're doing, we're adding landscaping adjacent to the vacant landscape, excuse me, the vacant residential lots to the north of us. And then also along the northwest where there are houses, we are also adding a wall and more landscaping. So right now, the neighbors just kind of look at a garage. And we're adding elevation around the building, and I think it'll make it look a lot nicer than what they have now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And at this time, this matter is open for public comment. Seeing nobody, it's closed for public comment and it's now open to the commissioners for their comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm unsure of why there's a 1,500-foot radius around the property versus a 400 because distance separation should be 400. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm going to check the maps here and see what the issue is.
So just to let everybody know, it doesn't intersect the park as much as it looks in our backup information. The 400-foot radius only clips the corner of the park. And, you know, I started thinking about this because I live about three-quarters of a mile mile from this location, and I started thinking, all the way from Interstate 95 all the way heading south on Eastern, this would be the first convenience store that you would hit without having to take, get a, or to take a U-turn to go back to the opposite side of the street. So also, Las Vegas Municipal Code 19.12.050C states, in connection with a retail establishment having less than 20,000 square feet of retail floor space, if the area to be used for sale, display, or merchandising of alcoholic beverages and each used to be protected or separated by a highway or right-of-way width of at least 100 feet, that we can make an exception to this. And considering that Eastern is, has 100-foot right-of-way, I can support this item.
And I would also agree with that as well. To stay consistent in what we've been doing, just recently, over there on Cheyenne, we approved a license for a restaurant that was close to, I believe, the Doc Romeo Park across from Cheyenne, which was within that distance because we approved it because of 100-foot arterial in between there. I would support this for approval as well.
If there are other comments, Vice Chairman, I would make a motion to follow staff's as-if-approved conditions for approval and...
If I may, Commissioner, on item number 31, staff recommended denial, so are you vote, are you making a motion to approve?
Approve based on their as-if-approved conditions.
Thank you.
So yes, votes for approval?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
With regard to item 32, SDR 455542, move for approval.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Director?
That item will be going forward to City Council on August the 15th.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 33, which is SUP 45549. The applicant is Renew Recycling Owner Floresta Incorporated. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed 33,000 square foot salvage or reclamation of products outdoor use with waivers to allow an eight-foot tall screen wall along portions of the south and east perimeters, and no mature evergreen trees as required along all perimeters at 3050 Cyrus Avenue. This is in Ward 1, Councilwoman Turkanyan. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have your report, please?
The proposed use is a conditional permitted use in the M zoning district, but the minimum conditions are not being met, and as such, a special use permit is required. Although advertised, no waivers are required for this application as the special use permit is required when conditional use standards are not met, are not met. Those conditions being, the mature evergreen trees installed along the perimeter property lines to screen any vehicle parts, storage area from surrounding properties, and perimeter walls a minimum of eight feet in height need to be stalled along the property lines. Staff finds that due to the reconfiguration of the site to allow outdoor activity in areas intended for driveways and parking, there is not adequate space for trucks to stack on the property without blocking either a required driveway, fire lane, or required parking spaces. For these reasons, the salvage reclamation outdoor use is too intense for the site, and staff recommends denial of the application. Please note we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Petya Belova.
Speak a little bit louder, your little voice.
I'm Petya Belova, Belova Engineering, 6130 Elton Avenue, on behalf of the client. I'm here to present the use permit and the waivers we asked for. Renew Recycling has been in business since 2010, so for the last 10 years, they've been operating to, in compliance with all the conditions and all the requirements of the City of Las Vegas Business License by Department, with the Southern Nevada Health District requirements and all the state regulations. They have all the necessary permits and approvals from the local estate agencies. Would like to address staff concerns for not having adequate onsite space and stacking of trucks on the street waiting to enter the property, and the concern for public safety. It is not Renew Recycling's policy to allow material to be unloaded in the street. However, the operations are currently not entirely contained onsite. Therefore, we're applying for, we would like to construct a block wall along the street frontage. Renew Recycling will be adding a second pay window on the north side of the building, which will eliminate stacking on the street caused by customers returning to the front pay window. They will wait on the scale, which is right back on the north side of the property, and that will eliminate a lot of the traffic congestion. Approximately 50% or more of the clients, customers of the business, are the ones who will be using the north side of the building as far as unloading and collecting payments. In addition, the whole site will be marked with, clearly marked for site entrances. There will be signs to direct clients to unloading and queuing areas. There is overflow parking area. I can show that on the site plan I have with me. Gate, of course, will be open, will be kept open during hours. There will be attendants. And as far as the safety concerns in the street, I would like to mention that the posted speed limit in Cirrus is 25 miles per hour, which to some extent helps the situation. According to staff, both Cirrus Avenue and Regal Avenue, adequate in size to meet the demands of the proposed use. There will be no problem with maintenance and repairs of any equipment because that will be all done offsite. In respect to site improvements, the business has made efforts to improve the process flow diagram, the process flow of the business by doing TI improvements of the interior of the building and adding another 15,000 square feet to the inside space for a total of 40,000 square feet. I would like also to add that the customer unloading area was repaved just recently to make a smooth transition from the west side of the building towards the front unloading area. In our opinion, construction of a CMU block wall will improve the aesthetics of the property. And the construction will start as soon as building permits issued. If this application is approved today, we will follow staff conditions and recommendations, and we'll be happy to come back in two years and report on the progress of the operations. And I'm here with the business owners, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anyone here that wishes to, did we already do staff? Yes, I'm sorry. If there is anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this item, we're ready to hear from you now. So we have two microphones. If you'd like to step aside just a little bit, applicant, and then we can move this along a little bit quicker, and we'll start with this nice young man right here.
Good evening, Scott Sauer. I am an employee of a company that is located at 3711 Regulus Avenue in Las Vegas. I would ask that my comments also be reflected for my employer located at that address as well as a second company that is Center Electric, also located at 3711 Regulus Avenue. Those two individuals were unable to be here this evening. While it is nice to see a business flourishing, especially in that area, that is an industrial area, so it is, to a certain extent, the right area. This site is way too small for their operation. They are regularly, to this day, allowing customers to unload from the street, Cirrus. When I left work today, there were trucks unloading, there were private individuals unloading from the street. In fact, on numerous occasions, I have had to stop and wait because there's been full-size semi-tractor trailers double parked on Cirrus Avenue waiting to gain access to that property. I think it's also important to note that the site plan you have has several issues with it. Part of the fencing that is shown is wrought iron along the street running north-south is actually not wrought iron, it is chain link. Part of the proposed eight-foot block wall located along Cirrus Avenue in the area of the material storage area is actually already constructed as six-foot and is shown in the pictures that you were showing earlier. There is also a block wall that is about six-foot high that has been constructed running perpendicular to the building, helping to segment that area off. The issue is, it's too intense, like staff says. If you are wanting to support this, I would certainly hope that you continue it. Hope that they get, and ask them to bring forward an accurate site plan that correctly reflects things on the site, and that this project and this proposal should also include a traffic management plan that very clearly and graphically states how they plan on managing the traffic. Because it is a great use to have, but it is a way-too-intense use that is not being managed appropriately. They were allowing people to unload heavily on the street, and in fact, both sides of the street until code enforcement and the city took action with them. They put two signs out there. I believe there was half of one sign left out there today, and it's still been happening. Not as much, they've been getting better, but it is still happening. And in fact, they also have vehicles that are staging in the private road located across from the subject site, which, actually, I've seen their full-size semi staging out of that road as well even. I mean, I have a lot of concerns. My employer has a lot of concerns because you have to have a nice area. The other business, Center Electric, one of his employees will actually drive farther to specifically avoid taking this section of road because of the hazards that exist around this business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, council members. My name is Raul Escobar. I'm the broker and property manager for 048 Realty, which manages this property. We're currently in negotiations with the owners of Renew Recycle to see if it's possible for them to rent additional space within the complex so they would be able to offload inside of the complex versus having that much traffic and that much intensity on the street. They've been, their business, fortunately and unfortunately, has thrived and has grown tremendously since they initially occupied that site. And as far as the intensity issue, it is a valid issue. The only resolution that we can offer to offset this issue is to have them move their offsite, offloading operations within the complex. It is a warehouse complex that is comprised of 450,000 square foot buildings, and what we've been negotiating with them is for them to occupy an additional 15,000 to 25,000 square feet in the building that is directly behind them, which does not, what we're proposing for them to occupy doesn't have direct street access.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And if I may, just make a comment, that I've spoken with you twice yesterday and today about this item, and I didn't call you back after I stopped there because I was a little bit embarrassed because when I pulled up, a car with a little yellow light on the top of it, I believe it was Neighborhood Services, asked me not to get out of the car because it wasn't safe for me to even look around the area. That's number one. Number two, this site is not harmonious and at all compatible with the surrounding uses. And I don't think there's a fence or a wall or anything big enough you can build to make this look appropriate for Ward 1 or for any Ward. And, you know, I'm very, I always meet you and I'm always fair, but this is a tough one, and it's, it's just, it's almost like scary, like I don't even know what to tell you to do, but I just know from my own feeling that no matter what this commission decides tonight, you will not see my support on anything because it's just a problem. So I'm going to leave it to my Commissioners and let you know that I was stopped today and asked not to get out of my car because I was not safe at this property site. So that's why I didn't call you back. I was a little embarrassed. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Flengus?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm just looking at the photos on this. This type of business is way too intense for the location you have. I just heard your landlord representative speaking that it's contemplated that you might want to move to a larger facility within the compound. If that's the case, there's no sense of even going forward tonight because the way this looks, it's just not going to pass at all. I would highly recommend you get with your landlord, see what you can do to get a larger facility, a facility that can facilitate your type of business, but this one's not cutting it one iota. So I'm going to have to recommend that this is denied.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Commissioner Truesdale, sir?
Yeah, Madam Chair, let me just say that if we stop churches from parking on a public street, we're sure as heck not going to let any unloading on the recycled business on a public street. Period.
Period. Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale?
I just, I'm surprised you even came forward with the application without doing a significant amount of work on the site to make this at least try to be presentable because this is, this doesn't even look like a good effort to make the application. And my real concerns are, you're running a recycling business, there's a lot of problems with people taking metals from various properties, recite, and selling it at recycling, and I know there's supposed to be monitoring of that. But if you can't follow the basic rules that we have, land use rules, I would, it calls into question whether you follow the regulations with regards to who you acquire copper wire from. And we seem to have a significant amount of these in the center of the city right now that show up in this area, one down on Western, there's another one. And I manage properties all over the valley and constantly, every bit of copper is taken out of a vacant suite, every bit of, I'm concerned that, we want people that run these businesses proper so we know that they're doing the rest of the things proper, so I wouldn't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Is anybody ready for a motion or another comment?
Comment?
We're not going to go back and forth. This is it. We're just going to have the motion, if that's okay? Oh, I'm sorry, what? Oh, you haven't commented yet?
Yes, I, we just would like to make a quick comment and would like the business owner
Oh, I apologize.
To have a chance to speak.
Oh, we'll have her state her name and address for the record. It's okay. It's okay.
Just on behalf of my client, we all agree that looks bad. We absolutely agree with this. So the whole idea was to come in front of you and ask for, give us the chance to improve the property. I think we have a chance and we can come back and report to you later, at a later date. Currently, they employ 40 employees. It's going to be a tough decision to make.
Well, and I don't want to go back and forth because that's not our etiquette, but if you were to get more building and more warehouse, then I would certainly love to see it come back. But if you're coming back with this little space, with this amount of stuff going on in this area, somebody's going to get hurt and it's just a menace. It's just, it's not appropriate for this area and it's an eyesore.
No.
And unfortunately, I hope you get more space because I, you know, we've done business together before on these and I know they're hard for you, but they're even harder for me to tell you no, but this is a no. So there you go.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
If I may, is this something that you would want to hold for 30 days and figure out? If you can lease more property on the interior, get all the loading off the street, put trees in, screen everything and answer all these concerns or?
Yeah, I'd love to do that, the opportunity to do that, maybe 60 days if it's possible. The reason we came to you, we had a short notice, we had the code enforcement issues and we had to come up with the application.
Right. That's who stopped me today, actually. So that's your, you would be happy with holding it for 60 days?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I really have a question for staff based on that representation and that is whether they can come back in front of us in light of everything that we just talked about, we'd like them to do. Or is this a brand-new application?
That, I don't know.
As long as the application is confined to the site, which has been publicly advertised, then we're okay. So in terms of things like improvements to a perimeter wall, adding trees, things like that, that isn't a problem for us to hold this for 60 days. If their application is to expand to a different property, then they would need to file a new application.
And so in light of that, I think this calls for an up or down vote based on the item as presented. That's my opinion.
Can I interject for one second? It would be, if Renew Recycle decides to lease more space, it would be on the same site. It wouldn't be at a different site. It would be a property, a building behind that particular building in, on the same site.
But it would still be a new application. Well, do you think in 60 days you can acquire the rest of this property?
We can effectively negotiate this within two to three weeks and then it would be up to them to do the improvements or whatever else, whatever other requirements the commission needs them to do. But as far as the acquisition of the property, we can effectively negotiate it within a couple of weeks.
Okay, well, I'm going to pass it off to Commissioner Flengus here who will tell you what has to be done.
Well, my recommendation to, if you accept it, is to pull this application and start over. That would probably be my best recommendation because it looks like you're going to try to find a new location anyway, which the director had just told you that it would require a new application if you go beyond this building. So my recommendation for you is to pull this matter, start over and get it figured out properly.
Thank you. I mean, we have a motion, please.
Are you willing to pull this matter?
Yes, I am.
The motion would be to allow them to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, that would be correct.
I'll make that motion.
Madam Chairman, I would then move to allow the applicant to withdraw their application without prejudice.
Thank you. The application then, I mean, the motion is to withdraw it without prejudice, then you're going to come back with something bigger, better, nicer, and you're going to all be, everybody's going to be happy.
Quick question, would that affect in any way the operations, the business in the meantime while we're?
Well, I'm going to have the city attorney answer that.
Yeah, I was going to say, whatever is wrong, you still have to correct. This holding of the item or striking of the item without prejudice or allowing you to withdraw without prejudice does not affect the obligations you have to conform with the city's code.
It's just my problem is, in order to conform to the code, we have to construct a wall. That's the issue. We have to have an eight-foot wall.
Well, but I don't know, I don't think we should be talking back and forth, but...
Okay.
This is not the appropriate board to address code enforcement concerns. I think that if you talk with code enforcement officers, they can prioritize the order in which they want to see things cleaned up out there. And if they are willing to put off on the wall, that's going to be between you and them to discuss and you can ultimately appeal their decision to the city council.
Well, we will withdraw the application.
Thank you.
Without prejudice.
So the motion is to withdraw the application without prejudice?
Yes.
And when you come back, it's going to be a bigger, better, greater project? Thank you.
We all hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes, does that go anywhere? Nope. Okay. Now we go on to Director's Business, which is number 34, Director's Business 45477, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas. Presentation of the Annual Report on the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan. May we please have the staff report? There is no recommendation and this is final action.
Madam Chair, this is the annual report for the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan to the Planning Commission. The 2020 Master Plan is intended to provide broad citywide policy direction through the year 2020. Nevada revised statute requires 19 specific policy plans to be addressed within the master plan and the city is in conformance with this requirement. NRS also requires that this annual report be made of the master plan to be heard by the governing body and the planning commission. Updates to the plan this year included an update and integration of the water and conservation elements and that was completed this year in 2012. Three element updates are currently in progress, the transportation trails element, the recreation trails element, and the housing element. During the past year, we've had some major plan accomplishments. We had the opening of the Smiths Center for the Performing Arts, which completed Policy 1.51, that we pursue such a performing arts center. We also completed the Meadows Walkable Community Plan, which addresses Policy 2.18 for the concept of walkable communities to be promoted in areas of residential reinvestment. We have consolidated business licensing categories and processes to make the city more business-friendly, which addresses goal number four of the 2020 Master Plan, to improve the economic resources base by encouraging a diversified business environment. The completion of the metro headquarters addressed Policy 2.37, in order to use the redevelopment plan as a means of promoting commercial development near downtown. The master plan document progress, implementation of the policy document is 98% complete. Of the 189 goals, objectives, and policies, 31 have been completed, three are not completed and 155 are ongoing. Those three that aren't completed, we are addressing through the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition and will be working towards that this year to complete those goals. The master plan element progress, implementation of the master plan elements is 92% complete. Of the 411 goals, objectives, and policies, 70 are complete, 34 are not complete and 307 are ongoing. And that completes our report of the annual master plan update. If you have any questions, myself and the director will be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Does anybody wish to ask any questions or?
Just a quick question, Madam Chairman. Just for my edification, what's the difference between not complete and ongoing?
Some of the policies are, and goals are items that continue throughout the life of the document and continue on. If they are not complete, they're items that haven't been addressed yet in one form or another.
And Commissioner, just to add to that, a lot of the policies or goals are statements to the effect of continue to monitor air quality or continue to do this. And so there are things that we have to do on an annual basis to make sure that we are complying with the goals and objectives. And so those are the ones that are ongoing that we have to measure.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for this, Director?
No, you're not allowed to take a motion, it's just a report.
Okay, final action, there we go. Okay, anybody else wish to say anything else? No, then we'll move on to number 35, which is TXT 45729, applicant owner, the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action to amend LVMC Title 19 to revise the standards for commercial real estate signage. May we please have a staff report on this?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, as part of a larger effort to look at some of our different sign regulations, we have been directed by a city council to look specifically at the sign regulations as they apply to commercial real estate signage. One of the things that is a little bit troublesome about our current code requirement is that the only type of sign that is permitted for advertising commercial real estate is a freestanding sign. Some of the things that we've heard from the community is that many times the commercial brokers would like to use some type of a banner, wall sign, and our code doesn't currently allow that. We require that it be a freestanding sign. So based on those comments, one of the things that we're recommending to you tonight is to amend our real estate sign code to allow basically either a banner or a freestanding sign and not to just limit it to freestanding signs. We aren't proposing to make any changes to the square footage of the signs themselves. However, in reviewing this with members of the public, one of the comments that I have had is that we should allow the minimum square footage, which is currently 32 square feet, increase that to 40 square feet, and that's really the only comment that I've had. So with that, I will turn that over to the commission if you have any questions or comments relative to our commercial real estate sign code.
I just wanted to ask, what about the distance separation between, you know, the signs? You know what I mean? Like, if you look like one of those day and night weekly hotels, it's not going to look like that, is it, with all?
No, that's not the type of signage that we are talking about under this section of the code.
So these are freestanding?
This is signage that is advertising commercial real estate that is either for sale or for lease. So for example, if there is a commercial property that has a suite that is vacant, this is the type of sign. Or else if there is a commercial parcel that is for sale, this is the part of the code that applies.
So the sign would go on that parcel individually?
Yes. Commissioner Bonner has a question.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, my question, Madam Chair, is, is there any duration, any time periods that are maximized or ending?
Currently, in response to your question, currently in the code, it says that the certificate for the sign is valid until the property or the last unit is sold or leased. And so it's not specifically a time limit, but rather until the sale or the lease of the property.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is...
And that might be a code enforcement issue that we need to follow up on.
Madam Chair, I do have a question for the director through you, and that is, how does this amendment align with the county and surrounding city codes on the same issue?
Commissioner Moody, thank you for asking that question. One of the things that we have been trying to do is to align ourselves more closely with other jurisdictions for a certain degree of parity throughout the Las Vegas Valley. This is one of the things that helps us do that. We're the only jurisdiction that limits commercial real estate sign to a freestanding sign. And so North Las Vegas, City of Henderson, and Clark County both allow a variety of sign types, not just freestanding signs. If you look at the square footages that are permitted, we are more or less comparable with City of Henderson, North Las Vegas. Clark County actually allows a little bit more signage in terms of square footage than we do.
Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. Obviously, this, I'm a commercial real estate broker. This ordinance direction impacts me and I'm more than willing to abstain on this item because I think it does create some impact that is specific to my business.
As I typically, what we advise is that if it specifically affects your business or business you're conducting right now, and you're going to have a pecuniary interest in the outcome of the passage of the ordinance, then we advise disclosure and abstain. If it affects you equally as much as any other business in Vegas, any issue of your other businesses that you have as equally, disclosure is probably enough. But if you think there's a pecuniary interest, then I would advise disclosure and abstention.
Then I think that disclosure is probably appropriate because I do have some comments that are actually industry-specific that might help here. As you indicated, you know, changing it to 40 square feet, most commercial brokers base their signs on a four-by-eight model. It's so at 32 square feet, no one's going to go pay a significant extra amount of money to have a four-by-10 or... And the other aspect of it is the ability to use banners on certain buildings where you have specific landscaping is appropriate and I think that's an improvement for the community. It's acceptable throughout. One I didn't understand was the maximum height of 18 feet. Is that wall height where it would be located or is that a freestanding sign?
As the code is currently written, as it only allows freestanding signs, that applies to the freestanding signs. When it is applied to the wall of a building such as a banner, then that height requirement would not apply.
Okay, so the 18, the 18 feet really refers to a
The freestanding sign.
A large format sign that's eight by eight on posts, which would give you close to that. Okay. Those are the only comments I had, so.
Thank you very much. Is that it then?
We would just look for a motion.
Looking for a motion on the last text amendment.
Madam Chairman, for item number 35, TXT 45729, I move to approve.
That motion is for approval? Please vote. And that motion is going to probably pass.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to city council in ordinance format.
Thank you. And keeping with the tradition of the meeting, we now are at citizens' participation. Citizens' participation and public comment during this portion of the agenda may be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium now, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Seeing none, we close the meeting and we adjourn the meeting and I wish everybody a nice month. Thank you.
[inaudible].